Three colors. Oh, I forgot what they were. One's for justice, one's for... Tom. There's like gold. I forgot what it is. There's gold, there's green, there's purple. One is for justice, one is for...
You got this background stuff. The love beads.
That is a star. Star.
Oh, I'm sure she knows.
Yeah. You should feed a lot.
Said one minute earlier.
Bring the vocal cords.
We're supposed to advertise.
Yeah, the...
Please rise for the pledge of the flag and the dedication.
Lord, we ask for encouragement to continue our work. We ask for enthusiasm to excel. We ask for commitment to complete our task. We made a commitment to care and share and be there when needed. Help us to fulfill all of those things. Amen.
Amen.
Clear call and roll.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
City Attorney Hawthorne.
Here.
Our present, your honor.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation that I would like to read. Whereas the American Red Cross, chartered by the United States Congress in 1905, provides relief to victims of disaster and helps people prevent, prepare for, and respond to emergencies. And whereas the American Red Cross in New York State is composed of forty-six chapters in the New York Penn Blood Services Region. And whereas during the many weather-related disasters that have impacted New Yorkers in recent years, such as the 1998 ice storm and more recently Hurricane Floyd, the Red Cross sheltered and fed storm victims, provided health and mental health services and financial assistance to those in need. And whereas in 1999, the Red Cross worked diligently to inform the public about the need to prepare for Y-2K and worked closely with the state government to prepare to respond to any problem. And whereas on a daily basis, the Red Cross helps New Yorkers via disaster preparedness, community disaster education and mitigation efforts, responding to local disasters such as fires by providing education and training in first aid, water safety, cardiopulmonary resuscitation, and HIV/AIDS prevention and treatment. New programs have recently been developed, teaching proper use of lifesaving defibrillation equipment and ways to reduce workplace injuries. In addition, the Red Cross provides services to the elderly and needy, including nutrition programs, homeless services, and transportation programs. And whereas the American Red Cross provides nearly half of the nation's blood supply and through the New York Penn Blood Services Region, provides blood products to those in need throughout upstate New York. And whereas the American Red Cross provides assistance to military personnel and their families, including communications, financial assistance and counseling, provides tracing services to help family members locate loved ones in foreign countries, responds to aviation disasters, and works with the International Red Cross, collects and distributes funds to meet the needs of people suffering from civil unrest and natural disasters around the world. And whereas all these essential services are made possible by thousands of volunteers who give freely of their time to assist their neighbors and by donations from the American people. Without the gifts of their time, money, and blood, none of these services would be possible. For over fifty years, presidents and governors have recognized March as Red Cross Month to pay tribute to this vital organization and to urge the public to continue to support its work. Now therefore, I, Michael Stafford, Mayor of the City of Fulton, New York, do hereby proclaim March 2000 as Red Cross Month. Carol Hunt is here to accept this proclamation on behalf of the Red Cross, and I would like to thank you on behalf of the city for all the work that the Red Cross does for our community.
I would like to thank you as well, everyone, because, you know, we actually knew we were all of these things in our offices in Swigel, and I think a lot of folks don't realize the depth of the programs that we offer, and we should be really proud that in this county we have continued, have not lost our presence, as so many other towns have had happened. There used to be twenty-four hundred chapters in the United States, and now there are only thirteen hundred. So there's a lot of mergers and new places, a lot of towns that have lost their Red Cross offices, but we fortunately have now, and we thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Resolved the minutes of the common council meeting of February 15th, 2000 are hereby approved.
I'll have it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk's report for January 2000, an amount of $4,118 is hereby received, approved, and placed on file.
I'll have it.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city attorney is hereby authorized to settle the pending lawsuit with Fulton Scrap Processors, Inc. by accepting $385, which is one-half of the amount sued for, and full satisfaction of our pending claims. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city attorney are hereby authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate this settlement.
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Whereas Section 177-25B8 of the Fulton zoning ordinance requires common council approval for any sign slash awning that projects over a city right away. Now therefore be resolved that Hargrave's Pharmacy is hereby granted permission for their proposed sign slash awning pursuant to Section 177-25B8 of the Fulton zoning ordinance, subject to them producing an insurance certificate to the city clerk, naming the city as an additional insured in the amount of $1 million.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on March 21st, 7:00 PM, in the council chambers relative to consider the repealing of 165-66.1 of the vehicle and traffic ordinance of the Fulton City Code, which implements a seasonal parking ban on State Street.
Motion? I'll move it. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of March 7th, 7:00 PM relative to a proposed local law which would amend Chapter 57 of Fulton City Code regarding dangerous dogs. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing open.
Mr. Hawthorne, would you cover in this, please?
Certainly, your honor. We have had, brought to our attention that when we have a dangerous dog proceeding, which are usually brought about because a dog bites somebody, but in this particular case, it was, that wasn't what happened, but it was still a situation where we felt that the dogs were dangerous and we had to put them in a kennel in a swiggle while the matter was resolved in the court. We find that the $7.50 charge per dog per day that we incur, there is no mechanism under our city code for the judge to order that the person pays that boarding charge. And in this particular instance that was involved, we're going to have to go after the individual probably in court for some of the money back. They did get one dog back, but two dogs they did not. It was quite a length of time and quite a bit of money. So this proposed amendment to our code simply gives the court the power to order that the, if there's a finding of a dangerous dog, that the person who owns the dog has to pay the boarding fees before they get the dog back. It just clears up what was essentially an omission in the, in the code.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to comment on this? Anyone on the council?
Does this New York State Agriculture and Markets Law, Section 120, does that define what a dangerous dog is?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all?
Yeah.
Entertain a motion to close the public hearing. I'll move it. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Entertain a motion on the local law. I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held at this meeting of March 7th relative to proposed local law which would amend Chapter 61 of the Fulton City Electrical Code. Mayor Stafford will declare the public hearing open.
Mr. City Attorney.
At our last meeting, we dealt with this issue on HVAC and plumbing matters. Essentially what it does is it allows for a mechanism for the court to order restitution if we bring somebody to court for performing or for doing these type jobs without, without a license. And I want to make it clear, some of the newspaper articles that were written about this last time, I think one I read didn't make it clear that it was for, strictly for unlicensed people that this applies to. If somebody has a valid license and comes into your house and does, whether it's heating, electrical, or plumbing work, and it's substandard, the city is not going to step in your shoes and sue the person for you. That's strictly a civil matter. But if the person is operating without being licensed in the city, then it becomes essentially a criminal matter, and as part of that, the city can and will seek restitution. And this again arose from a particular case we had where work was done and the person was not licensed, and it was done shoddy, and we attempted to get restitution, and we had a bit of a legal battle over it. So by adding this to all three sections, it makes it clear that the court does have the power to order restitution if somebody is again doing the work without a license.
Anyone in the audience care to speak on this issue? On the council. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Entertain a motion on the local law.
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Michael S. Scarry's Quality Assurance Coordinator for Swigel County Opportunities, 239 United Street, Fulton, New York, to the Census 2000 Committee is hereby entered into the minutes of this council meeting of March 7th, 2000, as a matter of record.
Next item.
Whereas the city clerk and city engineering department were authorized and directed to receive sealed bids on it before March 7th up to 4:00 PM in the city clerk's office for first in the city of Fulton with gasoline and diesel fuel in accordance with specifications prepared by the city of Fulton Engineering Department. Whereas the city clerk and Ronald Edick of the Fulton Engineering Department received the following bids and read them aloud as follows: Babcock Oil, $1.175 per gallon for 93 octane, $1.085 a gallon for 87 octane, and $1.008 a gallon for number one diesel fuel. Whereas by recommendation of Ronald Edick of the Fulton Engineering Department, he has recommended the sole bid of Babcock Oil and the amount specified above for gasoline and diesel fuel for the city of Fulton. Whereas the common council would agree with the recommendation of Mr. Edick, now therefore be resolved that the bid of Babcock Oil and the amount specified above for gasoline and diesel fuel is hereby awarded to Babcock Oil.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I had mentioned in the last meeting, we want to make sure that this is maybe tied to market price, in case, God forbid, the price of oil went back down. Is that, I mean, all this memo from Ron says is a price. Actually, did the bid come back like that? Where it was, you know, say their cost plus a certain amount? As opposed to being locked into this price?
Right. Goes up, goes up, goes down, goes down.
Yeah. I posed that question to him after the last meeting. He indicated that the standard contract that he uses does have fluctuations, but I haven't seen it, and I couldn't tell you how it operates. I mean, I think we ought to see that.
Yeah, I would want to see it.
That's what I am, and that protects both sides, and I'm sure it's in there.
Right. Okay. Can you say it's in there, Joe?
What?
It's priced that way?
That's what he said today.
Okay.
I mean, you could, I don't know, you could pass it.
Can you pass it subject to, oh yeah, I'll do that, I'll opt for that.
You'll review it tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Just notate that I did put "subject to the review" by the city attorney. Resolved, the city clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on March 21st, 7:00 PM relative to proposed local law which would amend Chapter 165, the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Fulton, D.C., and the speed limit on William Giller Drive and Corporal Barrett Drive.
Your motion?
I'll move it.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item.
Resolved, the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on March 21st in the council chambers relative to a proposed local law which will amend Chapter 137 of the Fulton City Code entitled "Sores."
Do you hear motion?
I'll have it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Next item. It is with great pleasure that I do this next item on the agenda. It's a resolution of appreciation for Michael J. Roden, who has recently retired from the Fulton Fire Department. I would like to read this and present it to Mr. Roden. Whereas Michael J. Roden retired from the city of Fulton on January 9th, 2000, after serving thirty-four years in the Fulton Fire Department. And whereas, for thirty-four years, Michael J. Roden has by his profession pledged his life, so that all citizens can rely on his professional training to feel safe in their homes, and therefore them when needed. And whereas, Michael J. Roden has exemplified his dedication and commitment to the city of Fulton, his fellow firefighters, and by his dedication and commitment, became a valued city employee for the past thirty-four years. And whereas, Michael J. Roden was promoted to captain in the Fulton Fire Department on September 30th, 1989, where he served until his retirement. And whereas, Michael J. Roden oversaw the fire investigation unit for the Fulton Fire Department. And whereas, Michael J. Roden assisted Fire Chief Anthony Garia on the days when Chief Garia was then Assistant Fire Chief. Whereas, Michael J. Roden was well-liked by his fellow firefighters and will sorely be sorely missed. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael K. Stafford, mayor, members of the common council, Fire Chief Anthony Garia, Assistant Fire Chief Dana Smith, and the entire Fulton Fire Department wish Michael J. Roden best wishes in his retirement, and thank him for his excellent service to the city of Fulton for the past thirty-four years. Mike, thank you very much. Joe.
Thank you.
You most certainly may. I don't think the department is going to realize how much Mike spent until some time passes. He provided a lot for the department, and I'm going to miss him a lot. I hope to see him. Enjoy your retirement. I know that especially in the last few years, he has given you just insurmountable amount of assistance. Yes. Thank you. The next item is also a proclamation in regards to the Census 2000. Whereas, the next census will be taken in the year 2000, and political representation to the United States House of Representatives, state legislatures, and local governments is determined by the census, and the city of Fulton recognizes the equal importance of each resident in the 2000 census count. And whereas, the city of Fulton has agreed to be one of thirty-thousand government entities in partnership with the U.S. Bureau of the Census. And whereas, the city of Fulton understands that it is primary to the role of this partnership to establish a complete count committee that should include, but not be limited to, the following subcommittees: government, education, promotion, religious, community-based organizations, special housing, and business. And whereas, the role of the government subcommittee is to bridge all gaps between the community and the Bureau of the Census on geographic matters, outreach activities, and information centers. And whereas, the role of the education subcommittee is to create census awareness programs for the pre-kindergarten to college students, to unify with educational institutions, distribute Bureau of the Census education programs, and to encourage parents and college students to apply for census jobs. And whereas, the role of the promotion subcommittee is to inform, educate, motivate, and persuade the city's residents in the necessity and importance of their rapid response and 100% participation in Census 2000. And whereas, the role of the religion committee, subcommittee, is to form a cross-denominational coalition for the dissemination of census information, inclusion of special announcement in church bulletins and sermons, hosting census awareness activities, and circulation of census job opening bulletins. And whereas, the role of the community-based organizations subcommittee is to make the community aware of the many ways census data is used to obtain funding for essential services and programs, and encourage their assistance in promoting participation in Census 2000. And whereas, the role of the business subcommittee is to encourage all area businesses to advertise the census message in sales advertisements, promotional materials and displays, and to sponsor Census 2000 community awareness activities. And whereas, the role of the special housing subcommittee is to assist in the location of shelters, soup kitchens, non-sheltered outdoor locations, group quarters, and other non-conventional housing facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Michael K. Stafford, mayor of the city of Fulton, hereby proclaims full support of and participation in the overwhelming success of Census 2000 through the establishment of a complete count census committee. And I want to add at this time, our city clerk, since he has been, had the experience of being through a census before, has taken the ball and run with it, and is doing a fine job, made recommendations to me for the committee members, and his, the committee has been working for quite a while now, getting the information out, and we cannot stress how important it is to promptly fill out the census forms when you get them and return it. We need 100% participation. All our future funding is based on what happens at a census, so it needs to be accurate. What was our percentage last time?
We're close to 90%.
Well, let's make it 100% this time.
That's what we're looking for.
Make it better.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, next item.
Well, it just seems like we already did that. We'll bring it up. Go ahead.
We were just wondering if Dan could explain the, this VNT amendment, because we, is this something that's, we feel has been already done? The one given to me by Jim Brandon on the stop intersection on Chestnut?
Joe, it hasn't. I was looking at Cedar. This is Chestnut, so it's all right.
Yeah.
I missed that.
Well, sorry. Resolved up Chapter 165, subsection 16552 of the Vehicle and Traffic Ordinance of the City of Fulton, the amended is follows: Stop Intersection, Schedule 8, Stop Sign on Chestnut Street, Direction of Travel West at the intersection of William Giller Drive.
Do you hear motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Opposed. Motion's carried. Does anyone in the audience have any business to bring before the council? Does any council member have any business to bring before the council?
Um, I got to say something.
All right.
They expect it. They expect something. Harley was getting ready.
Remind everybody to actually.
No, I think, I just want to say that the recreation committee would like to acknowledge the accomplishments of the high school teams, the high school athletes that participated this past winter season. We had some outstanding teams, some outstanding athletes. We had a hockey team that won a divisional title, a sectional title for the first time. Once again, our wrestling team, of course, was represented by three section champions that went to the States. We had outstanding, we had good volleyball teams, we had good basketball teams, girls indoor track. So we appreciate their efforts, and certainly none of this would be possible without the, the youth leagues that we have in our city, our Pee-wee hockey, our youth hockey, our Pee-wee knee-high basketball, all these, these young teams, young players that contribute to the high school teams. So every one of us on the recreation committee just want to thank the athletes, the teams, the coaches, and of course, the parents for their support and the fans. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Sahaski, do you have anything?
No, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Lincoln?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Very good. Alderman Sherman?
All set. Moving right along.
I kind of, Your Honor.
It's unbelievable.
Supper talk.
Very good. Just have to remind everybody to, if they haven't already, to be sure to vote in the primaries. Polls will be open until?
Till 9:00 p.m.
Till 5:00 o'clock. Please get out and vote. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.